Everybody good?
Everybody's ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the April 5th, 2019 Special Board of Education meeting to order. Donna, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Attia.
Here.
Mr. Koch.
Here.
Dr. Green.
Here.
Ms. Hodges.
Here.
Ms. Brusman.
Here.
Ms. Pasley.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Here. If everyone would now please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on in the agenda, item number two. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Is there any additions or corrections? Are there any that I... So moved as presented?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia.
Yes.
Mr. Koch.
Yes.
Ms. Hodges.
Yes.
Ms. Brusman.
Yes.
Ms. Pasley.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes. Item three, MCC-Hillyard Agreement.
You have two items underneath there. As you know, Metropolitan Community College approved a resolution a few weeks ago stating that they were going to be joining us in partnership, taking over the adult education programming at Hillyard. Again, that is not... They're not taking the facility. They're just doing the programming, the evening classes, those types of things for our adult learners at Hillyard. So our students are still going to be taken care of, going through the career and technical side of things at Hillyard, and then it'll just be a pipeline for our kids to be able to maybe take classes with MCC to get a two-year AA degree, and then maybe those students may matriculate on to North Missouri Western if they want to go on to a four-year degree. But I think it's a great partnership for us, a great partnership for our community. But in doing that, there's a couple of things that have to happen, and there's two items underneath this. You have the resolution and the MOU. The resolution pertains to the staff because the staff will no longer be ours. They have the opportunity to be employed by MCC and go through that process. And as I've shared with you and most of staff members, there's been discussions with MCC for months, you know, even before my arrival, there were conversations. So... And I know Dr. Kraus and his team has tried to work with the folks there, and MCC has brought up staff and will continue to bring up staff to help them. So the first thing is a resolution that deals with the employment aspect of our staff and what we have to do to end employment with them so they can be employed by MCC.
Ms. Brusman, so everybody, MOU's...
You have the MOU first.
Yeah.
My mistake.
I apologize.
Sorry.
We'll come back to that one.
Okay.
Foreshadowing.
Yeah, foreshadowing. So the MOU, which makes sense, you probably want to agree to the MOU first before you do something with the staff. The MOU is in partnership... Our partnership is a memorandum of understanding with MCC, which allows them to add... to take over the adult ed programming. There's built into there some agreements as far as equipment use and what they're able to do. As a reminder, remember right now, we oversee everything from the financial aid to the staff to the programming. For one year, it'll be a transition year. We'll continue to do the financial aid and the cost of students coming in, but those dollars basically will pass through us, and that's due to some issues that we've had in the past. You're aware of the audit, and we just want to make sure that we're doing it correctly in that process, and MCC wants to be able to have a year for that to come to completion. They'll work with our staff in making sure that the programming is offered. And I would like to say, Gabe's worked on this, Marley and her team, Dr. Hubbell, I know, has worked on this. Dr. Kraus has been involved with multiple things. Joe, our attorney, and his team has tried to work with them, and of course, Dr. Beatty and her team. And I know Seth, I think, went down to the meeting. Pat Lilly. So it has been a whole team effort in order to get this to move forward. So not that this is perfect by any means for us because we'd like for them to be able to take it over, but I will tell you that it's a huge positive for us, for them, to take over the adult ed side of this because that's not really our business, in my opinion. We want our kids to be able to have the opportunities as they move forward, but this is a great partnership, I think, for our community, for us and our students and staff as well.
But you did say that they... MCC will bring up staff who will train, properly train our people on the financial aid because really that's what we got dinged on.
Yes, they're supposed to be working with... Since it's in their best interest to be able to make sure everything runs smoothly through that process. So the financial aid staff will stay ours as that results from the federal government come back on what we have to do, and then they'll just make sure that we're doing... They'll give us tips and ideas on what we can do differently, and it'll help segue for them into taking it over as well.
Yeah. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, or if I'm right in this, is that the office staff is still ours, but if I remember right, I read in the MOU that they are going to also bring up a staff member of their own so that they would work in the evenings? Is that right?
That's my understanding. Is that...
In the office?
Anybody else?
In the office.
That's my understanding. So it'll just be... They'll have somebody there to be able to monitor the office, deal with phone calls, those types of things. The staff that's there will be financial aid staff for our aspect as well, and I'm sure if we needed to, we could work with our staff and MCC to move ours if we needed to, but right now, we haven't had that discussion. It's more of them starting this partnership and wanting to move it forward.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to clarify with the office staff that's ours now, that we'll keep those.
Yes.
Okay. So you need a motion?
Do need a motion for the MOU.
So moved.
Did you move?
I moved.
One second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia.
Yes.
Mr. Koch.
Yes.
Ms. Hodges.
Yes.
Ms. Brusman.
Yes.
Ms. Pasley.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes. Motion carries six oh. Now the resolution.
Now the resolution that I already talked about related to staff since you approved the MOU. Now this will allow us to release our staff members so that they can be employed by MCC, and it has to meet the guidelines, you know, as far as timing and what we have to do. Since we're readjusting our programming, that's really the bottom line to this, that through... Not redistricting, but reorganizing. What we're doing is a district. That's how it's going to be forwarded.
So to clarify, the reason that we're doing this, because first of all, when I read it, I thought, well, why aren't we going to pay them out for the rest of the year? Because I didn't think that that would be a huge financial burden, but I guess it's because we have to make a clean break, and these people could have resigned, but if they didn't, then we're riffing. Is that right?
That's my understanding. They had the opportunity, and Dr. Kraus, if you want to answer this, if I answer it wrong, they have the opportunity to resign, or if not, then they have to go through the RIF process as well if they chose not to resign. Am I answering that correctly, Dr. Kraus?
Yeah, for the most part, it's the RIF process if they're tenured and nonrenewal process if they're...
Okay.
Very good.
And so, thanks for clarifying that. And they're not losing any pay, though?
They get... They're with us till the end of their contract.
Okay.
So this takes them to the end of their contract. It's just severing that relationship from the end of this contract moving forward.
So it's just a separation of this... We have to end this on this date in order for this new... And then they can apply for jobs that are through MCC?
Yeah. And my understanding, I think they're already have started talking about how they're going to do that and put together the timelines for them to be able to do that.
So is MCC reaching out to them to give them the applications to fill out and such?
That's my understanding. I think they've even been up to the school multiple times to talk to them.
Oh, they've been out there? So I want to make sure I understand. Their contract ends on when? When do they?
June 30th.
So they just have to turn that in soon? Done? If they're going to resign? Yeah.
MCC sent some of their HR people to Hillyard this past Wednesday to visit with the staff that are affected and talk to them about the application process, gave them the timelines, that sort of thing.
Okay.
The answer to your question about timeline for the board, it requires board action either for a RIF or a nonrenewal, and since this is the last meeting before April 15th, it has to happen tonight.
Okay. So I make a motion that we... Well, I'm confused still. You can... We can still talk about it after you have a motion, so... Well, I motion to accept it.
One second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? Kathy?
Yeah, so I don't see why they have to be riffed if they didn't get their thing in by tonight.
Do you even have to talk to whoever wrote the statutes?
By April 15th.
It's a statutory thing.
Well, I understand, but weren't they already told that they're not going to be returning as St. Joseph School District employees, and isn't that just what they have to have?
They were... MCC has shared with them what they're wanting to do, and we've shared with them what that process is, and I think... I know Dr. Kraus was even over there and had a meeting with them saying this is the process that will have to go forward, moving forward with that partnership. So we don't necessarily want them to be riffed or nonrenewed. They were told that they could resign if they wanted to resign, but for whatever reason some may have, some may not have. So anything else you want to add?
I just feel like there... It's a bad thing if they didn't turn in their thing by today, and the 15th isn't for several more days, and even if... I thought that you just had to tell them that they weren't going to be renewed by the 15th.
There has to be official board action before April 15th, and they have to be notified. Since this is the last board meeting before April 15th, it has to happen tonight so that they... We have time to notify them by the 15th.
The only other thing I would say is to that, it's not necessarily a bad thing because they're being riffed or nonrenewed because of the reorganization. They're not being riffed or nonrenewed because of something that they've done.
So it doesn't make a big difference?
So if they make an application to come back to some other public school district...
It's not bad on them.
It's not a reflection on them.
It's not going to impact them. Okay, I just worry, you know, in case any of them weren't sure what to do or something and didn't have it in by now, and somehow that was a problem.
We'll explain the pros and cons of both of them to them, and I offered to write a letter of recommendation for anyone who wanted one.
Who maybe didn't want to stay here.
Of the 10 of them that were affected, I've written letters for seven of them already, and all of them basically say this nonrenewal or RIF, depending on their status, is based solely on district reorganization. It had nothing to do with their performance. So it's...
Okay. Well, I was just like, wait, wait, what's going on there? I wanted to know a little more. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure they got paid for the whole year. Well, yeah, because... Well, it's good through the end of their contract, so that's fine.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Call the vote, please, Donna.
Mr. Attia.
Yes.
Mr. Koch.
Yes.
Ms. Hodges.
Yes.
Ms. Brusman.
Yes.
Ms. Pasley.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes. Motion carries six oh. Onto personnel report. Dr. Kraus, good evening.
Good evening. At your workstation, I left you three documents. The top one should have been the supplemental report. It is quite long this time because we put all of the summer school appointments on there. That's why it's longer than usual. I don't believe there's anything unusual in either the regular or the supplemental report, and then you'll notice in your board packet was also a very short list of probationary reassignments.
I just have a quick question. On the summer school staff, are we not having any counselors work during summer school? Or did I miss that?
No, we are not.
There's no counselors. I don't think there has been for the last several years. I know that you guys have been.
We are hiring some counselors for grade level assignments, so they still have an opportunity to work this summer if they want to be a part of the summer school program.
Oh, okay. Do we have... How many?
And just clarification, this is just a partial list. We have not finished our summer school hiring yet.
Oh, okay. All right.
But for grade level, that means they're going to teach, they're not going to counsel.
Correct.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. I'd make a motion to approve as presented.
One second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia.
Yes.
Mr. Koch.
Yes.
Ms. Hodges.
Yes.
Ms. Brusman.
Yes.
Ms. Pasley.
Abstain.
Mr. Wright.
Yes. Motion carries five oh with one abstention. Four B, college and career specialist.
Right in your packet, you had a job description for... This current job description for college and career specialist. A couple of changes that I would like for you to consider to this. One was under the qualifications. Would like to have that require a high school counseling certificate. I had been visiting with Kim Hill about this off and on since I started work here. If you'll read down through the essential job functions, basically, it's a counseling position. Currently, only one of our three college and career specialists has a high school counseling certificate. I am not advocating that the other two don't have jobs anymore, but I am advocating that I would like you to change the job description, and then when we rehire, we would rehire people with a high school counseling certificate.
The current ones would be grandfathered in, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Nobody would lose their job. It would be simply if and when those people resign or retire, we would fill it with a certified counselor.
I'd make a motion that we approve as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote.
Mr. Attia.
Yes.
Mr. Koch.
Yes.
Ms. Hodges.
Yes.
Ms. Brusman.
Yes.
Ms. Pasley.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes. Motion carries six oh.
I have a technology question real quick. Every time I click on a link, it keeps going somewhere, and I can't find it. Yeah. The arrow that points down.
The arrow that points down. I had the same problem.
Where? It's weird that it's not just opening it, that's going into a download page.
Some computer guru named Luke taught me that last time.
Ah, okay. Well, this is the first time it's ever done that. I don't know why I'm doing that either. It's annoying. It just keeps going zoom over there. I'm like, wait a minute, I didn't...
It's only Word, the PDF pop up.
If they convert the Word documents to PDF...
That would be great, yeah.
So we need to do that by April 22nd.
Okay. So you don't have heads explode?
They're there.
I was just like, where did it go?
All right. Back on schedule. Four C, pay rates.
Okay. JROTC pay rates? Is that what we're on?
Yes.
Okay. In your packet, there were two documents. One that indicates the employees that were suggesting you approve for hire, and then an executive summary of the rationale behind the pay rates. It's basically a 50-50 split between the Army and the district of their base pay. The district contribution is higher because you'll see under the other column, now there's a $6,500 stipend for summer work, and that is borne solely by the district. So you can see the total Army reimbursement and the total SJSD cost. Does anyone have any questions about that?
I make a motion to approve the salaries as presented for the JROTC.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Sorry. Mr. Attia.
Yes.
Mr. Koch.
Yes.
Ms. Hodges.
Yes.
Ms. Brusman.
Yes.
Ms. Pasley.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes. Motion carries six oh. Four D, 2019-20 salary schedules.
Okay, there are a lot of these, and I want to get your guys' wishes on how you... how much detail you want here. My plan was to tell you only the ones that deviated from your January decision, which was 1% to the teacher base and schedules that are tied to the teacher base... I'm sorry, $500 to the teacher base and those schedules that are tied to the teacher base and 1% to all others. Do you want me to go through each one of them, or...
No.
No.
Okay. We did have a few questions, though.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, there's a couple.
I'll go through the ones that have something a little different in them, and then we could come back. On the additional pay rates, which was the second one, on page two, where it talks about nutrition services student, part-time employees, it says 785 per hour. Since the Missouri minimum wage is more than that, I would like to take a number out of there and strictly put Missouri minimum wage in that box. That's one of the two changes. The other one is on the back page with TMC hourly rates for part-time employees. You'll see it lists 785, 850, 10, and 1792. Again, because of the minimum wage, I would like to replace 785 and 850 with 11 and 12, and that'll give us about a two-year cushion until the minimum wage passes that again. Any questions about those changes?
No.
Okay. The next one that has some changes is the administrative salary schedule. You'll see some numbers in red in the third, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth columns. All of our other salary schedules have 31 lines. The reason that I have added on to those in particular is that we have employees who are either at or approaching the bottom of those columns, and since all of our others have 31 lines, felt like it was equitable to add to that. Any questions on that? Oh, the other thing I want to point out on this, the teacher... New teacher base is 36.7. Prior to this, the administrative scale was indexed to 34, 946, and I've added 500 to that, so it's a $500 addition to that base, not to where the teachers were at 36.2.
So the administrators' base salary is lower than the teachers?
The indexing on the administrative salary schedule is lower than the teacher base, yes. Percentage.
No, number-wise.
Number-wise. Because it's based on 35, 386.
It was set off of a different year, yeah.
Sometime we have to address that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's very good time, though.
Any other questions on the administrative one? Okay, then there are three. The process consultants, the SLPs, and the OTs, PTs, all have similar types of changes to them. Last year, we went through a process of compressing the administrative salary schedule and the professional salary schedule to make sure that the size of steps seemed to be appropriate, seemed to be proportional. Did the same thing with the PCs. Would want to call your attention to the right-hand column. There's a grandfathered column for the Masters plus 16. When those numbers were compressed... By compressed, I mean changing the size of the steps. One of our employees, current employees, fell off of the scale. Their number was higher than the 82066 at the bottom. The philosophy of the board, the last few years since I've been here, has always been that we don't want anyone to go backwards, and so what I did was created that grandfathered column for that particular individual, and he or she will proceed through that till they retire or resign, and then that column will go away. Okay? Then if you'll look at the SLP schedule, you'll see exactly the same thing. There I created... Well, the grandfathered BA was there, so I just continued that, and then I had to create a grandfathered MA column for the same reason. We had, I believe in this case, it was two employees who would have fallen off the scale, and so I created that for the duration of their tenure with the district. And finally, in that same vein, the OTPT schedule is exactly the same way. I created a doctorate column for one employee who would have otherwise been off of the scale. Any questions on any of those three? Okay. Kept the most confusing one for last. Also at your workstations, I left you two other sheets of paper. One that looked like this, has some red and yellow on it. It's a support staff salary schedule, and then a little spreadsheet with some costs on it. Through the... Over the last couple of years, we've been looking at salary schedules of all employee groups, trying to get them, certainly with the classified ones, into the 50th percentile range where we're competitive with other districts. Through the United SJSD process and through negotiations, we have been talking about several employee groups that we felt like still needed some adjustment. On the third sheet, or the sheet that's got both yellow and red on it, on the... Anything that's in yellow is a change. Anything that's in red is a deletion. Quite honestly, I don't have the slightest idea what HUFF means and how that got on there, so I'm going to take it off. And the TMC tech at range four is listed earlier in the table, so that can come off. We are suggesting, and again, this went through the United SJSD process, but since it deviates from what you talked about in January, I felt like it needed to come to you. The proposal is to move the print shop, which was range one, move it to range two. That affects two employees, and on the other spreadsheet that I gave you, it'll show you exactly the cost impact of doing that. The 211 secretaries, the process all along had been to move secretaries all to the same level. We had finished moving the 221s, and we'd like to do the same thing with the 211s, so that would be a move from range two to range three. Again, on the following page that I gave you, you'll be able to see the cost impact of that. Accounting clerks to change from range two to range three. That affects four people. Print shop lead to change from three to four, affects one employee. And bookkeepers, there's one bookkeeper at each high school, and that would... So three people, and that would be to move them from range three to range four. So on that separate spreadsheet that I gave you that looks like this, you can see figuring in the retirement at 13.06 percent. That takes into account peers and social security. To move all of those people is going to be roughly $75,000, $75,685.69. I do want to point out on the print shop, accounting clerk, and 211 secretaries. If you'll notice on this sheet, the number, there's 1.01, so a dollar and one cent increase. Anybody that moved from column one to two or two to three, that is what's built in straight across. It's a dollar and one cent difference. When you move from three to four, which is the case with the bookkeepers, would be the case with the bookkeepers, and the print shop lead, it's a significant bump. It would be like 16 to 18 percent raise. And so what I am going to try to do is get those people as close to a dollar and one cent raise as I can. Would have to adjust their step, move them across, and try to find the closest spot where they would get that dollar and one cent raise. Moving from range three to range four allows them a much higher top end. You can see 2376 as compared to 2933. And that's the process that we've taken in the past couple of years when people are changing ranges, where there was a significant change in their compensation.
But that's one person?
It's one person for print shop lead, and it's three people for bookkeepers.
Okay, all right.
Any questions on that? I know through a lot of information.
I would make a motion that we approve all of it as presented, including these last bumps for these last few people.
Because these were the last groups. I mean, we went through and did it for everyone else, and so I think it's time to finish up each employee group, and so I would second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, call the vote, please.
Mr. Tia?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Cruzman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes. Motion carries six oh. All right, now we...
Before we jump on to that, that's just a reminder, this happened because of levy pass. Those salary schedule changes all took place. So I want folks to understand that this just didn't take place whimsically, that the process that Dr. Kraus presented and the contracts that staff received early were based on this year's salary schedule. They will now get contracts. When will those go out, Dr. Kraus, if you don't mind me asking?
Well, hopefully, within a range. I won't pin you down. Our hope is to get all of the certified contracts out yet this week. There are a couple more things that need to be put into e-finance that we're waiting on, will be done tomorrow, and we would be able to get the certified contracts out yet this week, and hopefully, all the classified letters have been tent next week.
Because I've had some people ask, so I just wanted to, in case they asked you, and with our association folks here, too, I wanted them to be able to have some idea of where those things would be, in case they're starting to get questions. I'm guessing if I'm getting them, they're getting them, so thank you for answering that.
That's our goal.
So I think what you just said, Dr. Van Zyl, is the top two items that we took around on the spreadsheet, that we went to all those meetings that we went to, where it was the increase in the steps and lanes for the salary and the raise. We can tell the community, we've checked those boxes tonight. Is that what I heard you just say? Thank you.
Yes, you said that more eloquently.
That's what I heard. That's what I thought I heard you say. All right, item five, a policy GCBDA.
Okay, my favorite GCBDA and GDBDA.
These are just so dear and near to my heart.
GCBDA and GDBDA are mirror policies. GC for certified staff, GD for classified staff. So I'll walk you through the steps in the GCBDA document, and they're the same in the other one. First of all, there's a, and absences was changed from the title. That was a suggestion by MSBA, as is the red lettering, the sentence that starts with however, however, the board recognizes. The sentence after that, starting with when a professional staff member, going down through the paragraph that talks about no employee and family medical leave, all of that verbiage has been moved to GBCBC.
Sorry, glad to cross.
GBCBC.
He's really good at saying them fast.
And so that language has not disappeared from our policies, it simply has moved to a different one. On page two, page two of the way mine's printed off, anyway, gets into, under table one, there's a big paragraph, starting with effective as of March 16th. That was the language that was inserted last year in March to temporarily suspend the leave buyback policy, so that's been stricken, because I'm here to ask you tonight whether or not you want to reinstate this policy as it was. The two paragraphs in red right under that are just a reinsertion of the language that was there prior, as are all the wording on the next page, right above example one, that paragraph that starts with any employee, and all of examples one, two, and three are simply again a restatement of what was in the policy prior. Under the EL allowed absences, those were all lettered before, A through M, and they're now numbered. I guess MSBA doesn't like letters, I don't know, but anyway.
It gets confusing with all of the letters in the name of the policy.
It's the same wording, only 1 through 14, rather than A through M. The only change is to the wording, number three, where his or her designee was added In number 14, that, this has been our practice with the wellness day. Whenever an employee, they can select, by completing the wellness activities, they can earn, that's one of the things they can choose, is to have a wellness day, and our practice has always been that if they earn one this year, they need to use it by April 25th of the following year, and we just quantified it, put it in there. That's been our practice, it's just clearly stated. On bereavement leave, another page and a half or so on down. We took out the sentence, the district may require verification of the need for leave.
Okay, so on that, if it's for an immediate family member and it's bereavement, they don't need to bring back something that...
Correct.
But now, when it's under funerals up above, when it's someone that is not an immediate family, and they're not taking bereavement leave, then we still want to require them to, and they can do that online?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to clarify that, because there's been a lot of questions.
That was in regard to the conversation that we heard from several schools as we went around about having to bring an obituary from their sister or their wife or someone.
Right.
So that's something you discussed at your last policy.
Yeah.
So it doesn't directly tie to the leave buyback, but it is a leave policy change, so that's why we just incorporated it tonight as well. I think that's that. Drumroll.
What is this, the gob show?
Aaron, you should just stay there.
Was that mine?
It's probably mine. No, he gave me a new one.
Lynn Bridget, if you want to keep scrolling until I hit jury leave, you're close there. We just inserted some information there. Again, it's what we've been doing, but we just wanted to make sure people were aware of it. Anybody who's required to do jury duty, they will receive their full, normal pay from us, anything that they get paid for doing a jury duty there to turn into the district. I think that summarizes all of the changes. Are there any questions?
Can I make a motion that we approve both of them as presented?
Yes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Laurie, I heard you're ready.
Our policy committee is ready to be done with this, I think.
Oh, no, there'll be something else to change next year.
I'm sure. Let's call the vote, please, Donna.
Mr. Tia?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries six oh.
And again, before we move on, that was another item. That was part of the levy, which was...
Like, that'd be the third item? So now we check the top three? Is that what I heard you say, Dr. Van Zyl?
Yes.
So this is for immediate action?
Yes, this is reinstated as of today.
As of today, yes. I just want to clarify that, you know, just in case you needed that in the motion.
All right, item six, certification of the results of the April 2, 2019 Board of Education election.
So the board will need to approve the election results from the County County Clerk. Those election results were posted on the clerk's office, and I believe Donna put those on your link on there, so we can click on those, so we just need your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote, please.
Mr. Tia?
Yes.
Mr. Tia?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Cruzman?
Yes.
Do I need to abstain from that?
Can if you want.
Well, you're a board member now.
You're a current board member. So it's up to you.
Okay, yes. I just want to make sure I'm doing it right.
Yes. Motion carries six oh. Item seven, seating and swearing in of new board members. So I see the Honorable Judge Kellogg back there. Come forward, Judge, if you would, please. And Tammy?
Thank you for coming.
If you would come forward.
And I want to commend this board for their hard work over that election, because that's something should be said, because, you know, you all worked very hard, you stuck your necks out there, and you convinced this community that it was the right thing to do for this community. So I want to personally thank you that that was something, and so for you all to do that, that was just a great thing. So thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And I will also say, you know, it's great, you know, all but one precinct passed.
Yeah.
My precinct had the highest...
Just beat yours just by a little bit.
Seventy-four percent, so that was good. But as I'm actually saying, Brian's with his son is...
He is, yeah. So he can't be with us?
And I told him I would swear him in at his convenience.
So if you would be available on April 22nd at our meeting, we would love to have him back and do it again.
I'll make myself available to you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Now we have to count on him, that's scary.
I don't know, no, he would buy talk as well, too. But Ms. Pasley, you would raise your hand. Hi, Tammy Pasley.
Hi, Tammy Pasley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of the St. Joseph Missouri School District.
Of the St. Joseph Missouri School District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Not that I know of. Thank you so much.
I will see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Please get yourself a goodie back there. We do have goodies in the back, you guys, to celebrate.
No money for you, but there's some goodies.
All right, item eight, election of board officers. So item eight, A, I guess.
Yes, turn over the reins to you.
Okay, so I turn over the reins to you, Dr. Van Zyl.
So per board policy, BCA, I preside over this, and the election of the president and the vice president, and we will follow part and much of procedure and Robert rules in order for that to take place. There will be no board action on this, as this is just left to be conducted through a fair, election and transparent way. So first item that we have is the election of the board president. To ensure all of board members understand the responsibilities and duty of the board president, prior to electing the board president, there was a policy that was put there for you to review, as an informational item only. So at this time, we will take a nomination for the selection of board president.
I nominate Seth Wright for board president.
No, we don't need seconds for these, is that right?
Yeah, I just would be, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Have a nomination for Seth Wright to be board president. Donna, will you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Tia?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Cruzman?
No.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Now, we'll move on to election of vice president, and follow the same procedures. Again, there was an informational item put on there, attached for you to take a look at what the role of vice president would be at this time. I would take nominations from the floor.
Nominate Tammy Pasley for the role of vice president.
Any other nominations? Seeing none or hearing none, I will take nominations are closed. So with that, Tammy has been, pardon? Right, but she's been nominated, so with that, Donna, will you call the vote?
Yes. Mr. Tia?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Cruzman?
No.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Yes.
The next item under there is the appointment of board secretary and treasurer. Donna has served in that role. It would be my recommendation for her to continue in that, in that Dr. Edgar, who's been the treasurer, that vote Donna. Donna continues as board secretary, and Dr. Edgar would continue to move on as board treasurer.
So moved.
Need a second?
Are we doing it?
We need a second on that one.
Oh, we do.
That's not nomination, that's a mention.
Yeah, because to me, all I'm doing is appointment, so I need a, I got a motion, and who did give the second?
Luke.
Luke, okay. Donna, go ahead.
Mr. Tia?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Cruzman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Yes.
Does it go back over to him, or do I still keep going? I keep going? All right, goes to our board president to move forward.
Thank you. So agenda item nine is appointment of MSBA board representative. Who is our current representative? Is that Tammy?
Tammy and I are actually, and then Luke is the alternate. And actually, we have two delegates that we need to elect, and then the alternate, because of personal size.
Okay.
Okay.
So are you...
Well, I moved that Tammy and Laurie be the people, and Luke the alternate.
Sorry. Okay, can I clarify? Because I think there's some confusion. Last month, I had, we did the nomination for me to be, to continue as the board of directors appointee. That is separate from this.
From a delegate? Is that what this is?
Yes, and this is a delegate. So most of the time, the, if you're on the MSBA board, you are voted in as one of the...
Automatically a delegate.
Well, not automatically, you still have to be voted on.
Which we did.
We did, yes, we have currently.
And that motion is now in existence also, but...
So we got a motion? Did we get a second?
Yes.
So we got a second from Larry? Did you get that, Donna?
That you and Tammy be them and Luke be the alternate.
And Laurie as delegate.
Delegates, Luke is alternate.
Sorry, I was just talking away.
I was just like, I just want to, well, I think that people are confused by that, because they're...
Any discussion?
So who made the motion and who seconded it?
Cappy made the motion, Larry seconded.
And that's just, that's for one year at a time.
Yes, yes.
One year.
Right. Yes, and it's based upon the student enrollment, and that's why...
And Tammy asked if Luke would like to be the delegate instead of the alternate. I think I heard Luke say no.
I was reading the juke.
That's what I thought I heard him say.
And if you're wondering, it does say there on the document listed that the number of delegates is by school sign. Now, it doesn't spell out what that is, but I'm guessing since we're the large, one of the larger ones, the number of delegates would be...
Well, 11,000 is the cutoff, and they go by the previous year's enrollment number, so...
So it may change if we staple it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, so let's call the vote, please.
Mr. Tia?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Cruzman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries six oh. Before we go to executive session, Judge Kellogg reminded me, I just want to say thank you on the levy. I wanted to say that earlier. So Dr. Van Zyl, Dr. Edgar, Dr. Williams, the administrative team, thank you. We did a lot of meetings at all of the schools. That was important. It needed to be done. Thank you to our staff for what you did. You clearly came out and supported this. As Judge Kellogg said, we only lost one precinct, as opposed to the election before, where we lost every precinct. So, so team effort. It was a great team effort between the board, the campaign committee, the administration. Bridget, thank you. You did a wonderful job helping us with communication as well. Tammy, you did a lot. I think you beat me in the number of meetings you attended, so thank you. And a special thank you to Luke for what he did to engage this community on social media, and to be transparent and to be open. I think that was very important, and I think we've made great strides in that. That will continue moving forward, so good job.
And I would say, Larry also, they are our Facebook whisperers.
Yeah, Larry, I didn't mean to forget you, so sorry. Yes, thank you for what you did.
And I would just echo one thing, the congratulations and the thanks for that, but I would also say this, and I don't mean to single folks out, but it's not often you have folks experience a major loss, as Tammy and Larry did, and for them to continue to move forward with what they needed to do, I think that should be commended or recognized, and not only speaks to your character, but your willingness to support our students in our district in doing this. So not that other people didn't go above and beyond, but that, to me, that's exceptional. So we're very sad for your loss, but we also are appreciative of the extra effort that you took to move forward with that as well.
Thank you. And then I want to say also, of course, I, get me all upset, then I'm going to talk.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. I gave Seth Wright a ton of grief a year ago. He didn't quite convince me he really ought to be on this board, until after about, I